Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'll call this meeting to order on Tuesday, August 14th. Welcome. We will start --
Tuesday, August.
Oh, my gosh. Excuse me. That was last week's September 13th. My bad. Sorry. September 13th. Welcome. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance for those who would like to stand.
Pledge, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'll do a universal question with Commissioner Ivanka.
Repeat after me. We offer you peace.
We offer you peace.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you friendship.
We offer you love.
We offer you love.
We hear your needs.
We hear your needs.
We see your beauty.
We see your beauty.
We feel your feelings.
We feel your feelings.
We are all smart in our own way.
We are all smart in our own way.
We honor that in you.
We honor that in you.
Let us work together.
Let us work together. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is we are going to swear in a new board member and a new student representative member. We'll begin. Yeah, I would stand. This is Jenny -- sorry. We'll be swearing in Jenny Watts.
Jeanie Watts.
Jeanie Watts.
Or Jean.
Jean. Jean Watts.
Please state your name.
I, Jeanie Watts.
Do hereby swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as the City of Burlington, Vermont School District School Board Member.
Do hereby swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as the City of Burlington, Vermont School District Board Commissioner.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, in accordance with the law, under the pains and penalties of perjury.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, in accordance with the law, under the pains and penalties of perjury.
I just wanted to welcome Jean.
Thank you.
She is a thirty-year-old -- a thirty-year resident of the North End. I want to say she has --
She'll take that for a year old, too.
Yes. A thirty-year resident of the Old North End with twenty years of experience in education. She is entering her nineteenth year at the Rock Point School, teaching students art. Her children attend the Burlington Public Schools, and we thank her for her present and past involvement within our schools and as a PTO officer and parent volunteer. Thank you. We're excited you're here. Next is our student representative, Saban Hart. Welcome, Saban. Saban is a junior at BHS. He is a member -- a proud member of the volleyball and tennis team and a very important member of the math league and the debate team, so we are excited to have Saban as part of our family of school board members. You're welcome.
Please state your name.
I, Saban Hart.
Repeat after me. Do hereby swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as the City of Burlington, Vermont School District School Student Board Commissioner.
Do hereby swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as the City of Burlington, Vermont School District School Student Board Commissioner.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, in accordance with the law, under the pains and penalties of perjury.
To the best of my knowledge and ability, in accordance with law, under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Welcome, Saban. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Yep? Great. So.
Chairman.
Yes.
So, point of order, we're going to try to, going forward, move the consent agenda forward early in the meeting. This is a practice of other boards as opposed to at the end, so you'll -- every board member will have the opportunity to pull an item and it will become a new agenda item, and then we will approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Great. So, the first item of business will be to approve the consent agenda. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make?
We haven't approved the agenda yet.
Point of order.
Oh, the -- it's on the thing.
We would have to approve the agenda and then rearrange.
Great.
Have a motion to rearrange.
So, we're going to first approve the --
So, point of order, I believe it's would any school board member like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
No, first, we're going to approve the agenda. Sorry, everybody. We're going to approve the agenda.
I'm happy to propose an amendment to the agenda accordingly.
Thank you.
A couple of just technical amendments, which I believe, one of which the superintendent is on board with as well. That would be the removal of item 4B this evening. We'll get a more full update next time. I also propose that we add, and this just got left out, I think inadvertently, 3B, which is Board Reflection, and that we move Section 8 Consent Agenda up to 2D, so it will replace the existing 2D. And those are my proposals.
Great.
Anyone?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Any abstentions? Thank you, Commissioner Wick. The motion carries.
Okay. So, now does anyone have the --
Yeah. Does anyone have any items to pull off the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on.
To approve the consent.
Yes. So, now we'll approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. All right. Next on the agenda will be -- did you want to go out, go rabbit, the public comment?
Public comment.
Yeah. Thanks. Next on the agenda will be public comment. We ask that in public comment, we are going to offer three minutes for every speaker.
First up is Jenna Peterson, Haley Newman, and Julia Shannon Carillo. Up next is Rita Markley and Shereen Hart.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Julia Shannon Carillo. This is Haley Newman, and this is Jenna Peterson, and we are all registers of Burlington High School Student Newspaper -- editors of Burlington High School Student Newspaper, The Register. First, we would like to publicly acknowledge and thank the Vermont Press Association and the Student Press Law Center for all of their guidance that they've given us throughout the past few days, and also, we'd like to thank all of the local news outlets who have helped spread our story to the greater Burlington community. As you know, on Monday, September 10th, The Register Burlington High School's newspaper published a fact followed by a public document substantiating that fact. At 8:00 AM Tuesday morning, Mr. Green, the principal of BHS, demanded we remove the article immediately. He did not ask us directly. He ordered our teacher and advisor, Ms. Fialco Casey, to take it down. We removed the article because we did not want to jeopardize Ms. Fialco Casey's job, and we were hopeful that Mr. Green would quickly change his mind once he reviewed the New Voices Law with her. He did not. Since that moment, we have asked ourselves many times what would have happened if we had not taken it down. After three days of consulting with lawyers who specialize in student press law and First Amendment rights, we understand that this order from Mr. Green is a violation of our rights. We felt that then, but know it now. The BSD Statement Regarding BHS Register Story released today fails to show an understanding of our rights under Vermont law. And while it is kind of Mr. Green to lift his ban on this one story, what we would appreciate more is if the Burlington School District did not break the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rita Markley, Shereen Hart. Up next, Patty Wesley.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Rita Markley, and I have two students currently at Burlington High School and one who just recently graduated. And I'm here tonight to express my deep concern about what's happening at BHS, particularly the Guidance Department. Most parents, no matter what their income or their background, hope their children will have a chance to attend college. It's a dream we all share. I'm here tonight to ask why the district leadership isn't doing everything possible to help our children achieve that dream by requiring competence, accountability, and professionalism in our Guidance Department. We are now moving into the third year of tolerating a level of staggering incompetence and belligerence with Mr. Macias that has caused complete upheaval in the Guidance Office. In the first year, most of the staff resigned because working with him was so intolerable. But the district leadership chose to stand behind Mr. Mario Macias, and that came at the expense of students who were left with a Guidance Department last year that was in complete chaos. The whole process of applying for college was much more stressful and difficult because incorrect dates for tests were given, BHS didn't sign up for the VSAC program at the UVM College Fair, inaccurate information was relayed again and again to a number of students about their application process. Even worse, a year-long investigation by the Department of Education ended with formal charges against this man for falsifying school records, harassing a student-teacher substitute, behaving so egregiously that a twenty-year internship program with UVM was ended, and being deceitful in his responses to student questions about pending applications. When the news of the discharges broke, the response by our BHS principal was to state that Mario Macias's performance was stellar so far and to remove the story from the high school news site, deflect, deny, suppress, or undermine the media. That mirrors all too closely what's happening in Washington right now, but it's heartbreaking to see this occurring here in Burlington, at our schools, in our community, especially when it comes once again at the expense of our students. I have worked on social justice and equity issues for nearly thirty years, thirty years, most of my adult life, and I cannot fathom why one man who has abused the power of his position is allowed to continue in his role here. I work at a place that serves the poorest in our community. If one of my employees deliberately falsified records, harassed an intern or a student or coworker, and yelled or intimidated children we serve the way my daughter was intimidated by this man, that employee would be fired. Why? Because we believe that the people who need a place like COTS deserve competent, professional, and respectful service. We believe they deserve excellence. We don't always get it right, but that is the standard we strive for. Why don't the students at BHS have the same commitment from the leadership? My daughter had the courage to speak up publicly during the investigation, but that was only after she tried again and again to directly address the issue with Mr. Macias. When he yelled at her, pointed his finger menacingly in her face, she reached out to her principal and the superintendent. It was only after she tried several times with no response from either one that we stepped in as her parents and supported her decision to be included in the investigation. She can't be here tonight, but I'm certain she would want me to ask, why don't the students at BHS deserve a competent and professional Guidance Department to help them reach whatever their future dreams may be? Why don't they come first? And how is this not an issue of equity that we tolerate such low standards and poor performance in those who are supposed to help students strive for their highest goals? I urge you to take action with Mr. Macias and to examine closely why the district leadership allowed his tenure to continue while students and staff suffered the consequences of his erratic temper and unprofessional behavior. Please send a message that accountability matters, that abuse of power is not tolerated at any level of our school system. Let the students know that they do and they always should come first. Thank you.
Up next is Jan Schamberger.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Patty Wesley. I'm a resident of Burlington, a parent of a 2013 BHS graduate, and I worked at BHS as a school counselor and director of the Counseling Department for decades. I retired from BHS in June 2016. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. More than a year ago, I also spoke to the school board during public comment time. I expressed grave concerns that a number of valued professionals had recently resigned from the Counseling Department. I asked the board and the district to examine the circumstances that led to these resignations. At the very least, these longtime employees deserved face-to-face exit interviews so that any issues of concern could be addressed. As I said a year ago, it seems any well-run organization would want to understand what happened. Since then, three more employees connected to the Guidance Department have resigned, making a total of seven. Since then, not one of these seven employees has received a face-to-face exit interview from this district. Since then, those who resigned have endured a barrage of disparaging comments on social media, labeling them as entitled, resistant to change, and not liking being told what to do. I describe these comments as code for women should not ask questions or speak out. I noted last year that many of the comments I was hearing in the community were very inherently sexist. In fact, I can't help but notice the me-too aspect of this current situation. Women's voices are being dismissed, discredited, and silenced, including student voices in the school newspaper, and men in positions of leadership rally around each other with support. The irony is not lost on me that the school principal censored a factual article in the BHS Register because he thought it created a, quote, "hostile work environment." Where was this school leader over the past two years when counseling professionals expressed the exact same concerns about the intimidating and disrespectful climate in their department? So, after the school district and the board heard public testimony about these concerns in August of 2017, they did absolutely nothing. The Agency of Education, however, did take note that night, and they launched a year-long investigation into the allegations. They did conduct face-to-face interviews with former and current employees, interns, and students. Their findings are public record and have been widely published in the past few days. I leave you tonight with these questions. Who should be held accountable for all of this negligence? Where's the Human Resources Department in this sequence of events? How can BHS students, faculty, parents and guardians, and the whole Burlington community be reassured that the school and the district leadership are now taking these allegations seriously? I eagerly await some kind of reckoning and public acknowledgement of what I'm terming a disaster. Thank you.
Up next, Nancy Comstock.
My name is Jan Schamberger, and I coordinated the Student Assistance Program, which included substance abuse, mental health, and crisis services for the district for 21 years before resigning four years ago. In the time that I worked in the district, I was located in the Guidance Office and worked very closely with Colleen McSweeney, Eva Amblobos, Adrienne Preston, and Larissa Urban. Not only were these women amazing at their jobs, but they were incredibly skilled clinicians and women of great, great integrity. Knowing these women, I can only imagine how difficult it was for them to come forward with these numerous concerns. But also knowing these women and knowing who they were, I know that they did it for the right reason. They did it because it was the right thing to do, because it was in the best interest of the students and the families of this district. I am so disheartened that the numerous concerns were ignored by not only administration, but HR and the superintendent and the board. In fact, not only were the allegations ignored, but the recent -- the principal that is here now commented on what a stellar job the Director of Guidance was doing. In the words of the board member, "We hear your needs." I hope that the needs of these women will finally be heard, along with their concerns. I hope that the Agency of Education will be heard, and I hope for the sake of the students and the families of these -- of this district that the allegations will finally be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Comstock. Up next, Caroline Crawford.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Nancy Comstock. My comments tonight are quite different from the previous comments. Totally different subject, but I think just as important. My husband and I and our four children all attended Burlington High School and have been part of this community for sixty-plus years. I attended one of the BHS tours, which was led by Marty, Kate Stein, and a student. The student was saying that one of the reasons he feels a new school is needed is because he can't fit his books in his locker. No one uses their locker because they're too far away, and also because his books just won't fit. When I told him, "I went to this school, and even with eight classes a semester, my books all fit," he then said, "No, you don't understand. I take AP courses, and our notebooks are really thick." I think this is a really poor justification to ask taxpayers for seventy million dollars. We need to come up with better or better ideas of what we can do to make the school better usable for the students.
Thank you.
Caroline Crawford. Up next, Jennifer Tomczak.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. I didn't know that I was going to speak tonight, so I don't have prepared remarks, and I'm a little nervous, so I hope you'll bear with me. My name is Caroline Crawford. I've lived in Burlington for 25 years. My son graduated from BHS last year. I have another -- I have a daughter who's a sophomore here. And I wanted to speak tonight just to address our family's experience with the Guidance Department in the last year and what a challenging year it was. I have about fourteen unanswered emails that I sent to the Director of Guidance, starting in the beginning of the year, asking for explanations as to what the transition would be with my senior having lost his Guidance Counselor, how students would learn to manage Navions, why students were not made aware of the UVM College Fair, why Burlington High School was pulled out of the VSAC How to Pay for College Night by Mr. Macias and never rescheduled. I emailed him repeatedly, never received a response, and it finally dawned on me after about four or five weeks that the reason I wasn't receiving a response is because he didn't have the answers. He didn't know how to use Navions. He didn't know about the College Fair. He didn't know how to answer my questions. And that terrified me. I had a senior getting ready to graduate and go on to college without a Director of Guidance who could walk him through the most simple steps of the process. I have worked in higher education for 20 years. I work at Middlebury College, one of the most elite liberal arts colleges in the country, and even with that knowledge, our family needed help, and we couldn't get it from our high school. And I had to, at that moment, make a decision to engage in an outside consultant who could train us on how to use Navions, a basic tool that every student in every other high school in Vermont knows how to use. And within probably the first fifteen minutes of working with this consultant, we learned more than anybody at this high school knew, and we, in turn, trained his friends on how to use this tool. This was not a good use of our time. It was not a good use of my money, but it was what we needed to do. And I am so frustrated that another year has started with unanswered questions, unanswered emails, including another email that I sent yesterday, asking how we were going to address this situation. If a family like ours who has access to so many resources cannot figure out this process, I want to know how the rest of the families in this city who are not as fortunate as us could possibly be expected to succeed in this kind of environment. I have had it. I am mad. I love this city. I have been proud to send my kids to these schools, but for the first time in my life this week, I said to somebody, "Honestly, I wouldn't send your kid to BHS," and that horrified me. My mother is a public school teacher, and I'm ashamed. Thank you.
Next up, Tracy Deller.
Welcome.
I'd like to say a few words in regards to the current situation involving the head of the Guidance Department at BHS. I'm an alumna of BHS, a parent of two former BHS students, one who overlapped for one year with this Guidance Counselor, and I'm a neighbor to many more BHS students. In the twenty-eight item affidavit resulting from the Vermont Agency of Education's year-long investigation, we have heard the difficulties of a confident, high-achieving student, how many difficulties she had with this Guidance Counselor, and as a former speaker mentioned, I'm really concerned about other students who don't have such a good grasp of the English language, who don't have parents who know the system, who don't have the same financial or educational skills. How are they managing to work through the Guidance Process? I'm concerned about the safety of female students, given the many findings in the affidavit detailing the stalking behavior of this Counselor. As a parent, I feel we need to protect students from this type of individual, not leave them as victims to him. As a woman, I'm very disturbed about the Guidance Counselor's misogyny and how it's been condoned and protected by the administration. As an alumna, I'm embarrassed and ashamed and concerned about the credibility of BHS. This has always been like the real shining point of our progressive city, and I feel like BHS has never looked as bad as they do now. Falsifying transcripts puts every student from the school at risk. Losing the 20-year collaboration with UVM is something that we can't get back very easily, and it also is a very bad mark against BHS. We may lose our right to give advanced placement exams or classes due to the proctoring incident. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned about financial liability. We can barely afford to pay our teachers as it is. I hear this Guidance Counselor got a promotion and a raise after his first year on the job. I'm not sure how with this kind of behavior. We can't afford a legal harassment suit. We can't afford a sexual harassment suit or any other potential legal matters that may be coming up with what he may have done with students in the building. Our students deserve better. They deserve to be protected. They deserve to have positive role models who exhibit adult behavior. The employees who work with this individual deserve better. They don't need to -- they don't deserve to work in such a toxic environment. I consider this man a danger and a liability. I believe it's -- the current administration should suspend him as soon as I believe it's, the current administration should suspend him as soon as possible, at least while the hearing is pending. And I'd like to see better leadership from our administration going forward. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak. My name is Tracy Dangler, and I am a parent of two kids in the district, fifth grade and pre-k at IAA. And I am here to say thank you for the Community Engagement Committee that formed, and there was a meeting August 23rd, and I felt very good about that meeting and the toolkits that they're preparing to create for the district to communicate with parents more effectively and with the wider community. Something that came out of that meeting was a desire, I think Martine suggested, of putting together an ad hoc committee, or head up, yeah, ad hoc committee on pre-k, kind of like the BHS re-envisioning committee. And I would, I didn't see that on the agenda tonight as a, I think the board has to vote to let that happen. And I wanted to urge you, you know, we've been sitting and not really moving forward with this since June, and I would like to see that committee form and have things move forward. So I would ask the board to vote on that tonight at some point and get that committee rolling. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Kerr.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a daughter who is just starting the eighth grade at Hunt Middle School, and the issue that I wanted to raise is one that is constantly on the agendas but still persists, which is bullying in schools. And while I think there's a lot of goodwill to address the issue on the ground, I just don't see impact. And I guess my plea to all of you and to our system as a whole is listen to the students. I mean, first and foremost, we should be trusting the students and listening to the students. And for me as an adult, and certainly for my daughter, it's been very dismaying to see posters with contact people, and yet when those people are approached, children are often given very mixed messages. Some teachers will say, "This is bullying," and plenty others will say, "Get over it." You know, "Learn how to deal with it." I'm one of those parents who quite frankly likes to let children resolve their own conflicts. And I think there's a, there's a form in which we can do that within the schools. But I think it's, children are very confused about what their rights are and what the school system and their individual principals and teachers really believe. And I can tell you that last year when my daughter was in seventh grade, she missed the majority of the school year because she was bullied and it was never addressed. And the tendency, at least from my experience, is to address the child who is what is called the target and kind of victimize them, which I don't think is really helpful, and a reluctance to talk to the kids who are engaging in the behavior. There's a sort of aversion to conflict, which just doesn't really go with resolving the problem. It's not good for those kids either because they, they're sent a message that it's okay to be out in the world behaving this way, and that's not a good thing for them. And I can tell you that, you know, on my daughter's seventh grade, eighth grade team, within a matter of two months, there were no fewer than four students, my daughter included, who transferred out of the school system entirely. So I, as a parent of very limited means, had to find a way to send my daughter to private school for the last quarter of the year, just so she could finish the year. So we're giving it another shot, because I'm a big believer in public education. My daughter's at Hunt this year. And I guess I, as someone who sees the bigger picture, believes in the bigger picture, I just want to say, I know that things take time, and I know that processes are, can be complicated, but I think there's some basic core values that if we just really live them, things can improve very quickly. And I would just say, you know, let's really create and build community. There are some schools that are doing a fantastic job of it within the system. Maybe it's as simple as trying to share some of that knowledge and goodness around. Because it's when there is not a strong community that individual students, individual teachers, and individual administrators even, you know, suffer the consequences. So thank you for all your work, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Mike Donahue.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mike Donahue. I'm here on behalf of the Vermont Press Association and the New England First Amendment Coalition. And I actually, my brother Jim taught here for 35 years, and if any of you got through his classes or your kids did, I salute you for the way he treats some people, so. Anyway, the Vermont Press Association and the New England First Amendment Coalition condemns the Burlington High, the Burlington School District and its high school administration for ignoring an important Vermont education law enacted to ensure First Amendment protections for journalism students and teacher advisors. The condemnation comes after BHS Principal Noel Green made an ill-advised demand that an accurate news story in the student-run newspaper, The Register, be removed from its website on Tuesday. The story focused on the Vermont Agency of Education filing six counts of unprofessional misconduct charges against BHS Guidance Director Mario Macias. The four student editors who broke the story used public records to document the story. The charges included incompetence, falsifying the student transcript, mistreatment of employees, improper release of student information to a third party, improper treatment of a college student who's working as a substitute teacher. Macias denies any wrongdoing, but the education secretary wrote that he wants to suspend his educator's license for 364 days. The four student editors, fearing retaliation by the district against their Burlington High School teacher and newspaper advisor, reluctantly removed the story, at least temporarily. The VPA and NEFA are asking for four corrective steps to this censorship case. We ask, one, the Burlington School District to repost the news story about the AOE investigation and administrative charges immediately to the Register website, and to let it remain in the archive. Number two, the Burlington School District and top administrators agree in writing to follow the Vermont law known as New Voices that ensures the First Amendment for student and teacher advisors without fear of retaliation. Three, Burlington School District worked with the Vermont Press Association and other First Amendment groups to sponsor training for at least Northwestern Vermont School District leaders, so there is not a repeat performance in Burlington or at a nearby school. Four, the Burlington School District Superintendent Yao Bang and Principal Green each to write letters of apology to the student journalists for misunderstanding, misinterpreting, an important student education law. The Vermont Legislature worked hard on the so-called New Voices legislation that is designed to protect student journalists and their teachers from retaliation by school officials for printing certain stories. The legislation was signed into law in May 2017 by Governor Phil Scott after strong backing by both the House and the Senate. There is a certain bit of irony in this legislation and censorship case. Among those offering key testimony in the legislature last year were a couple of editors from the Burlington High Newspaper, talking about past problems of prior restraint, censorship, and other First Amendment issues caused by Burlington School officials. BHS students testified that they had received pushback and often had stories read by top school district administrators and censored before publication. During the legislature, the BHS edu, BHS editors were joined by student journalists from several schools, including BFA St. Albans, Woodstock Union, University of Vermont, along with educators from St. Michael's College, Vermont Law School, and UVM, offering examples of the need for the New Voices legislation. The Vermont lawmakers in both the Senate and the House were struck by the importance that the next generation of journalists be trained now to sort out truth and fiction. It is essential for students to learn critical thinking, whether they are going to be journalists, business leaders, or politicians at any level. In this case, it was initially unclear if the current Burlington School District administration was unaware of the May 2017 law, which was passed, which passed the Senate on a unanimous vote, or if the BSD chose to ignore the law. It now appears the censorship was due to a complete misinterpretation of one section of the law by the BHS principal. There was no immediate danger of material or substantially disrupting the ability of the school to perform its educational mission. There was no thought of any riot, fight, or threat of violence. The unprofessional charges filed by the Agency of Education are serious. We understand that the BHS Guidance Department has been in turmoil for the past year. That is all the more reason that BHS students and parents should know about this case. The VPA and NEFA believe this can be a teachable moment, not only for Burlington School officials, but students, educators, and school board members across the state. I will give credit to Principal Green for responding to our inquiries and having a wonderful conversation about the law and when we explained certain things to him. We are trying to make this statement available to the district, but unfortunately, the superintendent, the district spokesman, and others all failed to return messages yesterday that were left. And we look forward to a response from the school district. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who would like to make any public comment?
Thank you very much for those that spoke. Next on the agenda is board reflection. Each board member will have a minute or so to reflect if they would wish, so I'll open it up to board reflection. We'll start with Kathy. If anyone.
I just wanted to say to everyone that got up and spoke that we are listening. And you know, we do certain things that we can do, and we will.
Give the mic, please.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Is it on?
Yes.
I just wanted everyone to know that we are listening to what you're saying, and we are, we will take it all into consideration, but it is a personnel matter, and so it needs to be done in executive session, and I hope you understand that. Thank you.
I just want to express my pride, as I've always had, for the Burlington High School students. I think they showed courage. I think they showed professionalism as young journalists. And as a, as an editor of my newspaper at Rice in 1965, I understand what they went through. I'm very proud of what they did, as I'm always proud of the, of the work of the Burlington Schools, students in Burlington High School. And I'm sorry that you had to go through that. And I think now, I think now that we should be very clear about what the law is. I'm a little concerned about the new rule you've, you've accepted. 248 hours seems like a long time for a news story, but I'll let you go through that policy with our administration. But I just want to let the citizens of Burlington know that I, and as a representative of the student board in Burlington, think the power of the student's voice is very important in this community and in this school district.
I'll just second what Commissioner Pillsbury said. I work at a high school that does not have a school newspaper, and I've always been so proud of the work that our students have done. I think it's important to our community. I think it's important to democracy, and I applaud your work. I know you spend long hours writing and investigating, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you to everyone who spoke up today. We've been dealing with the guidance counselor issue since we've been sworn in onto this And I'm also kind of speaking for one of my co-commissioners who couldn't be here this evening, but it is our understanding that each teacher is on a two-year probation period. And so this probation period for Mr. Macias would have ended at the end of last year. So, and I don't understand, I know a year, just over a year ago, everybody on the guidance team left. And some of these people, one of the women that left had 21 years' experience working in the guidance department here. Another had 15 years of experience. That's a big message to the community, to people in Vermont. Why do we continue to have a guidance counselor lead that, that nobody can work with? Our kids don't deserve this? Think about it. All of the Burlington schools go to this, kids go to this high school and need to go to college from here. We need a competent head of the guidance department team. And it is my understanding that this person was on an intensive one-year assistant program, and it's also my understanding, he never got a formal evaluation in the last year.
Commissioner, order, order.
Yeah.
Commissioner, sorry if it's a personnel matter.
Okay. So, yeah, I'm just speaking in my own parents, not for the board. I'm sorry to.
The board.
And then I just wanted to respond to Lisa Cannon about the bullying issue, and I'm very interested in that as co-chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. We talked about this issue at our last committee meeting on August 28th, and please let me know. We had one of those four parents come to talk to us about their story. So, thank you.
To the person who spoke about the, microphone. To the person who spoke about the bond proposal for building renovations at the high school, I just wanted to reach out and say that I would be happy to speak more with you about why I think that this building, for the betterment of our students and future students at BHS, needs to be renovated. And feel free to reach out, and I'd be happy to talk with you about why I believe.
So, thank you, everyone who came out. Thank you to everybody who communicated with board members over these past few days about the guidance department. We hear you, and we know that this is an important issue, but I ask for your understanding that the board is accountable for having processes followed. And so, as, as much as we want to make, want to do something from our heart, for me personally, I want to make sure that processes follow so that the right things happen in the right way. Thank you.
With regard to the censorship matter, I want to try to put as positive a spin on it as we can. I think that was a real learning moment, and I hope we'll never make that mistake again. And I don't think we will. Maybe I'm overly optimistic, but I think we've got it, I hope. And with respect to the personnel matter, of course, we can't speak to it, but there is, as Commissioner Fisher alluded to, the law has a well-defined process for that, and I'm sure I speak for all of the commissioners that we take it very seriously and are working within that process, and thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
I just, is this the right mic?
Thank you.
I also would just like to thank everybody and just say that I know it's a really difficult experience when a public institution that needs, you need to trust is, you're questioning that trust. And a learning experience for sure. I'd just like to ask everybody for patience on a number of fronts, aside from the guidance issue, just in terms of the bullying. As Monica said, we are, that is on our agenda for the Diversity and Equity Committee this year, and the high school issue, everybody will hear a lot about that. But just in terms of our, you know, our public institutions, we, we face challenges like any public institutions face. any public institutions face, and with education, you know, you send your kids here, they're gay, and, and we all want it to be an extension of our, you know, our own networks and community. And building that is, is challenging with limited resources, and that, that is separate from personnel issues. But building community is, is challenging for all of us when, you know, we're all faced with the pressures of, that our larger society faces today. So, it does take a lot of patience. It takes a lot of working together. And so, in these more, the, not, so I'm just divorcing this from the immediate personnel issues, but on the other issues, asking for everybody's patience. Thanks.
Sure. No? Is everyone good? Would you like to say? Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Focus of Learning.
I'm going to ask Victor Fusak to come up and start our Focus on Learning. And before I start, since I don't get a chance to do Board Reflection, I do want to take the opportunity to thank everyone who came out to share their thoughts around all the various topics that were shared. And one thing I would ask people to go away with, just because you might hear or see things or hear information and you share it with the board, does not mean that the board is not considering it and taking action in some form. But we do have processes that we have to follow, and that may mean that we can't share information with you when you would like it, or take the action you would like. So, hopefully, people can be patient in understanding that. And with that, we'll move to our item around the elementary class sizes. So, let me bring you back, back a little bit in terms of, we've been talking about elementary staffing for opening of the school year. And if you recall, we had a, a couple of FTEs that we had allocated, and we've been having conversations with administrators and looking at the new enrollments as students have, have come in. And Victor's been working with the administrators since August to try to make sure that they have what they need within our limits. So, I'll pass it with Victor.
Thank you. Have you heard? Over there? Yeah? Okay. Thanks. First off, I just want to congratulate Saban. I walked in right when I heard all this applause. I was like, oh, what's going on? There's Saban. I had no idea. So, it's always neat to see students who, I first laid eyes on Saban in my curriculum work at the middle school, and now you're a junior, and you're sitting on the school board. That's totally awesome. So, thank you. And Isaac, thank you for continuing. So, before I get to this, I just want to say, it's interesting to sit in the audience here as a member of the public and also someone with one of these badges on, because I work in the district. I have a daughter who's at the high school, and she's a junior. And I would be disingenuous if I didn't say that both the issue with going on with guidance and also with the BHS Register article, it is, it's emotional. And I'm like, I feel it in my stomach and heart right now. So, if you hear my voice being not as relaxed as it normally is, it's because of that other role that I face, other than being someone who works as a Burlington School District. Annual Look at Class Sizes. So, this is a slide that we've actually seen before. We've seen this back to, I think, January was when this was first shown. And so, this is just going over what we do every year. And as I said at the last meeting that I was here in August, I believe, some of this is based on predictions. It's based on the data that we have at the time. The prediction is based on, we don't really know who's going to walk in our doors when we get to that first day in August. And now we do. And so, what we did this year, I believe for the first time in my nine-plus years in the district, is we actually held on to some of these potential allocations and waited till we saw who walked in our doors to figure out what's the best way to allocate those and worked with principals to come to some decisions around that. Thank you. So, different from last time, we had a slide very similar to this, but this has now some updated data in it. So, on the far right are the predicted ratios that we shared way back in January. And now, though, we have the enrollment, this is as of a few days ago, three, four days ago. So, this is the enrollment, not including pre-K. So, this is K-5 enrollment. That's the second column in each of our elementary schools. The number of homeroom teachers, and then what those student-teacher ratios actually are. And if you'll see, there's some variation from what we predicted. Some went a little bit up, some went a little bit down. I would say, I don't personally see any sort of dramatic differences in where we ended up from back then. And at the bottom are just the K-5 ratios that we use as a guideline in our district. So, twenty-two students on average in grades K-2, grade III, twenty-three students, grade IV, twenty-four, and grade V, twenty-five. Those are not contractual limits. Those are not state limits as well. These are our guidelines that we use in our district. Next slide. Thank you. So, just bringing us up to speed, what did we do with these extra allocations? So, those teachers who were not homeroom teachers, we're not including special ed and EL positions or other licensed positions like guidance and others, but that we had reserved, that we didn't use for homeroom teachers. So, Sustainability Academy kept one allocation from last year, and that's being used in multiple ways, combination of special ed, EL, and PE, split up in different portions. In the last meeting that I attended, after that, the superintendent allocated one more FTE of these to IAA based upon the Equity Index and the highest homeroom class size averages. On September 10th, and I don't know how many people know this, we opened up another section of kindergarten, so another homeroom of kindergarten at Edmonds Elementary, and that was due to a rapid increase in enrollment. In fact, from when I was here in August to when we made that decision the week before the 10th, we had ten or eleven new kindergarteners enroll in the district, brand new, didn't even know they existed. Some of those didn't even start school until the 10th. We offered them spots at Smith and Flynn where we had room, but by the point, by the time that we had made the decision to open up the other section, those students chose, or those families chose to wait and not have to make a transition from Smith or Flynn down to Edmonds. And another roughly half dozen families chose to move from Smith or Flynn because they registered fairly late in the process, and they all lived, or live, south of Pearl Street. Most of them live actually south of Main Street, and so this gave them an opportunity to have more of a neighborhood school. And I was really lucky enough to be there on the 10th. Shelley Mathias did an opening at eight-thirty in the morning for that class so that they weren't dealing with the whole rush of everyone else showing up at school. We all met outside. I got to talk with the parents face-to-face, meet the kiddos, and it was great. It was really great to see, you know, that impact that you're having and how thankful, and even one child came up to me. She kept waving at me, and I didn't know what was going on, so I was talking to the parents. I walked over and I got down low, and I said, hi, what's your name? And she said, Ayanna. And I go, oh, I talked to you at bedtime about ten days ago, and you refused to go to bed until you talked to who your mom was talking to. And she said, I just want to thank you. And that just like broke my heart. You know, that was lovely. And congrats to Shelley Mathias, by the way, for pulling this off. So, to pull off a new, adding a new classroom after the school year has begun. And Jeff, you actually asked that question, I think. Have we ever done that before? And I was like, no.
Can I, thank you for sharing that, Victor, because one of the things I want to kind of, because we'll be going through this process again next year, and I want to kind of remind everyone, we started this conversation, I think, back in May or June, and I know people were curious about where we would allocate. And this is exactly the reason why we had, we had to wait and make sure we get the right numbers that come in and work with our principals to make sure the allocation. I'm glad we did, because otherwise, we would be, we wouldn't be able to put a smile on Ayanna's face and say, welcome to, to Edmonds. It'd be, who knows what we would be doing. But that's part of the process that Victor's been managing and been doing it very well. And you can tell by the description, it's not just a numbers game.
No.
You know, Victor actually takes the time to go and connects with the families and finds out what their needs, and so it's more effective than just the numbers when we just put, when we do the budget stuff, when we put the numbers up. But there are people who are actually working, making connections with, with our staff and our, and our future students and our students.
And at Edmonds right now, just so you know, we, I think we're up to eighteen kids in a class, so our cap is twenty-two. So, it's not like we have a class size of twelve kids or something. We had a real need to have this added. And then today, I met with the elementary principals to have some discussion with them around the use of that final FTE that we have. And they have their, several principals have some ideas about how they would like to use it. Essentially, there's three schools right now that are expressing some need. They have not come to consensus at this point, how to do that. They're getting us some data to sort of support those different needs. In all cases, well, there's one principal, and I really don't want to go into the details, I just don't think that's appropriate right now, but one school's asking for a full FTE, but would be okay about having to split it. The other two are proposing things that use partial things for different needs in their schools. And so, we're hoping to have that resolved. I was actually going to hopefully be able to meet with Yau tomorrow or possibly Monday to finalize that, so that wherever that need is going to go, that can happen quickly. Okay. And any questions?
Thank you, Victor. One minute. Yep. So, Commissioner Currie, I'll start this way. Commissioner Currie?
Oh, yeah, I was just curious about IAA having the highest student-to-teacher ratio, just as far as how the Equity Index works, because it just seems like that's the school with our highest need and the least progress towards indicators that we've seen SA reach, and so that seems just like a tenuous situation. Is there any plan to support that?
So, they got the extra FTE based on their demographics and how many kids they have enrolled.
But their predicted student-to-teacher, student-to-teacher ratio is the same as their actual, and it's the highest ratio in the district.
Right. So, they have the highest number of students. I guess I'm not understanding your question.
They don't have the highest number of students.
They got the highest ratio, you mean?
The highest ratio. There's an average of twenty-two kids in a class.
No, I know. And I'm just saying that, given their needs, their level of needs being higher than the other schools, as far as the Equity Index, it's, it's difficult to understand how the Equity Index is actually working if it creates a situation at IAA where they have twenty-two kids per teacher with very high needs.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's hard to understand how that outcome.
The Equity Index.
It doesn't seem like the outcome is, the outcome we're seeking with the Equity Index.
The Equity Index actually is not intended for that. The, the reason the need is, the reason the numbers are so high there is, that is the most popular school in the district.
Well, I understand that, but I'm saying, we're using, and my understanding of the Equity Index is, we're using that to achieve outcomes that close the achievement gap. I don't understand how we can achieve that outcome with twenty-two kids per teacher at IAA.
Yeah. So, one of the things that they did get, receive an allocation because of their high needs, as opposed to other schools.
Staffing.
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 Staffing, sure. Now, we've given some latitude to principals to utilize that staffing in, in the way they think it's going to support their schools. So, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to add another classroom. They might say, oh, I'm going to split that up and have a resource person that's going to go here and there and there. And that's similar to what's happening at IAA in terms of how they allocate. So, that's where they get their bit of autonomy. We say, okay, here it is. You figure out how you want to do it. Some, some schools might say, we're just going to add another classroom and split it. Or some schools might say, I want to use that as a, you know, resource person that's going to help smaller groups. So, that's how it, it kind of translates, because the principals have that autonomy. So, we're not saying, you must put it here. We're saying, yes, you earn another one. How do you want to use it? Right? And then that's how they materialize it.
Okay.
We make sure that the, the ratios are within the standards that we set, which, which we have. And when you look at it on face value here, it looks like, oh, we're all under the, is it twenty-three, twenty-four, right, for, for the numbers? But as I said, you'd have to get the individual principal to say, okay, well, this is how I'm using it, and this is how it's supporting my school and my staff, as opposed to us saying, this is how you're going to use it.
Commissioner Awon?
I, I mean, I've seen this with different numbers, and you're right, but what I still don't know is what is the algorithm that you are using? How are you weighting what gets weighted for having poverty, what gets weighted for having, being on IP's, what gets weighted for, for English language learners?
You mean, you mean like the specific algorithm?
Yeah. I think you raised that in the last conversation, and we have it on the, on the, on the docket to actually do a presentation just on the Equity Index, so we can, this is not.
I thought this was it.
No, this is the allocation, what we did with the numbers. So, we, we're going to do a presentation eventually on just the Equity Index, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Victor.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is the Chair's Report. We, Commissioner Fisher sent around the meeting mechanics item. It's pretty straightforward. I hope that everyone is amenable to them for efficiencies, and I would like to just acknowledge them going forward at the start of the school year for efficient meetings. Thank you, everyone. Any questions or discussions?
You're next.
Next on the agenda will be the Superintendent's Report.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. One of the items we have on, on Item A for the Superintendent's Report is a non-compliance report. And a non-compliance report is a report that we bring to the board that demonstrate that we're seeing an alert that we may not be in compliance with one of the policies set out. And this one has a particularly around 2.8. And hopefully, most of the time, we bring a non-compliance report, we'll have a corrective action. That means we've kind of figured out how we're going to address it, or we're working on it. And Director Labrie is going to represent this particular one, because it has some financial nature to it.
Good evening. So, first of all, I want to say, while this may be a non-compliance report, I think by and large, it's actually a good news story, although that's the kind of language of, of our policy governance structure, to call it non-compliance. For those who have not had a chance to read the report, I'm just going to briefly summarize it. So, we were approached, well, let me step back for a moment. In January earlier this year, there was, an idea came forward that had already had some work done by a combination of some community members, as well as the IAA principal and, and some others within the school, that boiled down to an opportunity to convert the, part of the basement there into therapeutic art space. There had been some money raised. You can see the details, and there's a, a nice history to, to that piece. To make a long story short, we agreed to go forward with the project, even though it wasn't part of the capital plan or anything else that we had budgeted for. By and large, the funding was coming from the, some, some donors in the Lower Cape Winter Bottom Memorial Fund. And so, we, we went ahead with it, and the reason for this report is because one of the things you sometimes discover in these old buildings when you start tearing things up like floors, is that there are things underneath them you didn't anticipate. People knew it was a possibility, but we decided it was a worthwhile project. We went forward anyway. Ultimately, what they found there just requires some additional investment to kind of leave us in a position where it's a suitable flooring that we'll put over it. In short, they can't use a flooring that was less expensive. They have to use a more expensive flooring material. And the district stepped in and said, we, we agreed to pay for that additional cost that wasn't anticipated by the fund when they took the project on, because we felt like the project in general was worthwhile. We also felt like having that space in limbo, so to speak, while, while kind of like debating over who should pay how much for it, wasn't in the best interest of students. So, we said, we're going to go ahead, we'll pay for it. Let's keep, keep the project moving as much as possible. So, the purpose of this report is just to let the board know that was a unanticipated expenditure, something we hadn't planned to be involved in at all when we built the budget. Now, we're spending a little more money. It doesn't mean that we're going to end up in deficit or anything like that. It's early in the year. It's not a huge amount of money, even though $10,000 sounds like a lot in the grand scheme of the budget. It's not astronomical. But we did want to show that, to the extent that it does create any problems, we would plan to address it by accessing the contingency funds, which is just the money, if you recall, that the board included in the budget for unexpected things that we didn't know would happen. So, this is more of a warning that that happened. We wanted to make that clear. The other piece that we're going to do in response to this, we've had a couple of recent projects that have been great in leveraging community interest and, and support, but they've also resulted in unanticipated costs. And so, we want to put in place a procedure that helps guide staff and other district personnel in these efforts, so that in the future, we make sure that some of these things are better coordinated from the outset, so that we're less likely to encounter kind of surprises later in the process. So, we want to do this in a way that still honors and validates the hard work that volunteers and staff are putting in, but also doesn't leave us in a position where we get surprises that have financial consequences we didn't anticipate. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if I missed.
Commissioner Currie?
Sorry. I'm sorry if I missed this. Sorry. I'm sorry if I missed this. Did you explain why we're not using the capital plans for this?
Yeah, this is not part of our capital plan. This came outside of that entire effort.
But it can't be, because it's not in our plan, we can't use capital plans?
Okay, yep. I think I understand what you're saying. Could we use, so I'll put it this way. Could we use bonded money to pay for this? The answer is yes. We could do that. That's another option. Obviously, we're in a position right now where we're doing all that we can to minimize the amount of debt we take on for, for reasons you're very familiar with. And additionally, we know that, you know, even a capital plan like that, that's an estimated cost of numerous projects. We wanna, like, we wanna work to stay within that as much as possible. So at this time, I think we're better served to look to other sources. Conceivably, that would be another option if we felt like we had nowhere else to turn. I just, I don't think it'll be necessary in this case, and I think we'd prefer to retain that capacity for the actual capital plan that we envisioned.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just add one of the things? I know Nathan said I wanna kind of reinforce both those projects were projects that were initiated from community partners and working with staff as well, too. And we wanna be able to continue to be able to do that, but at the same time, we gotta figure out how we can do that in a way that we can make sure we can support the project. So, we're gonna work on some, some processes around that so that we'll be able to vet the, these projects and have people come on board with realistic expectations. So, thanks to everyone who's been trying to form partnerships with us. We appreciate it and look forward.
Absolutely. Commissioner, you present the pictures.
Oh, just put them up on the talk table. Great. Thank you. Last item, and this'll be quick, is good news. And I, I just wanted to share a good news in terms of, I think this is probably one of the best starts we've had. And this is based on comments I've had from staff through, going through schools. And here's a couple of photos that you see. This was our big assembly for all staff here at B. Champlain, that's at Champlain. Carson got to dismiss the, the students that, there. So, one of the exciting things that happened this year was at Central Office, Central Office staff were at different buildings for the opening, and many of them ended up getting put to work in terms of being in the schools. And it was, it was a great opportunity to engage with, with parents as well as students there. Some good photos of, of learning happened right away in terms of in our classrooms. There's our, one of our new principals out with, with parents, meeting parents on the first day. And it was a really good feel to start the year. And I've had a lot of good positive responses from, from staff and students going through. And it was nice, after being here for a few years, to actually see students who recognize who I am and know my name and can spell my name, and even the ones who transitioned from elementary to middle school and from middle school to, to high school. So that was kinda neat to, to see that. The other thing I would say is that Victor talked about the numbers pieces. Overall, our overall numbers really didn't spike like high. We're pretty much about the same. But there are pockets where, you know, you get a, a big flow in one school, but the other school kinda maybe drops a few kids. A good example would be Burlington High School. I think we had a difference of about maybe 40, 50 kids. A lot of last-minute walk-ins and some kids from the private schools nearby in our, in our city as well, too. So that was neat to see. People were coming to Burlington. And of course, we've always had a bubble in the middle school going through, and then we're seeing that come through now through our district. And of course, at the pre-K level, we've got a lot of future, future students to come through. So that was good to see that we're healthy in terms of growth. I know many of my colleagues around the state are still in the decline, and we've kind of pretty much stayed, stayed firm with our numbers. So, and wanted to share that with you as good news.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Oberg. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent Monitoring Reports.
Okay. Excellent. We did share this with you, so I hope you had a chance to glance through it. I won't spend a great deal of time with it, but I'll just highlight Carson's if I can, might have to look at it on my own screen. It's kinda, the first one is the Superintendent Succession Plan. So, just, just scroll through it quickly. You can go through, and you can see in the succession plan, I really did outline sort of a process in the event of the absence of a superintendent for any reason. And you can see the various teams that we have in place to, to keep this system running. And we've ensured that we've got people with the appropriate certifications at each level. And we've established a structure, I've talked about this before, in terms of an exec council structure and a systems leader structure that can keep the organization going as well, looking at operational issues on a daily basis and also the long-term strategic plan. And then at the bottom of the report, even with our policies, we have directors assigned to the different policies. So if there was a period of time we needed to ensure that the policies were being monitored, we have individuals who are, their role is to monitor those policies. So, you have received it before, open 20 questions, but I hope the board will receive this, this monitoring report as complete.
So we'll approve individually the monitoring reports. So any questions on monitoring report 2.6, the Superintendent Succession Plan? So I make a motion to approve.
In compliance, excuse me.
Point of order, you're asking for a motion?
No, sorry. Yes, about are we in compliant? Are we agreeing with the superintendent and his compliance in this report?
I so make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We gotta say aye.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor. I thought you did. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Mike, Commissioner Fisher. Then the motion carries. Next, Superintendent Oberg.
Thank you, Chair. Well, the, the next one is 2.8, which is around communication and support to the board. And there are a number of sub-policies within this policy and limitations. And hopefully, you've had a chance to at least glance through it. And really, the purpose of this, these policies are to demonstrate communication to the board on different levels around information that you need for tactical and strategic reasons, but also just updates around what's happening in the district. If you look at the indicating metrics, in the first area, we talked about Superintendent Goals and Reporting, Routine Financial Reports, that you see strategic plan updates. And if you scroll down, there's, there's a section on non-compliance. Last year, we did have one area of non-compliance we brought to the board, and we were able to share that. And a number of other, many presentations, you can see the links in the evidence. You can go back and refer to when the presentations were done or what that document refers to. So, so you need some bedtime reading. Good place for you to go and digest that. But I think it's a good history and historical track record that we can kind of watch and monitor and see how we're moving forward. Some of the other communication pieces around the strategies that I use to try to communicate with the board, and we talked about, so their weekly updates. I know you receive some of my operational updates around that, and then communications around urgent matters that may arise and to not surprise you as, as best as possible. So, this is really the report around the communication piece, and I present it to you to receive and hope the board open for questions and etc.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Fisher?
So I have two questions. Thank you for this, Superintendent Oberg. Number one, item, limitation number four around unaware, being unaware of any blah, 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 threatened or pending lawsuits. So, there was an example of one related to a former BTC director, and there was actually, you know, communication in the media, and we had asked for some information from you, and I don't recall receiving that.
Okay. So one of the things that the, these reports are annual reports. So this would be from, information from last year. So, the next report you'll see for all the items from this year. So, this report actually bridges former board as well as your entry in, on April, I guess it was.
So what's the, what is the time period for this?
Yeah. So this'll be until like June. So you guys would be the first, the three months from April to June, and the rest is the, the prior board.
So help me understand, 'cause, 'cause, you know, I'm new to policy governance. So as we do the monitoring reports throughout the year, they reflect on the prior year?
It's an annual report. So, you will see, there will be some reports that will specifically say that it's inclusive of some part of this year, because if it, if it's a report that happens in, let's say, May, then logically, I can include things that happened from September the fourth. But the reports I do in September, right, most likely, I'm doing it in the summer in preparation for September, and I'm looking back at the data from back forth. One that's really clear around that is you look at some of the financial reporting pieces. That's an annual. So we do the reporting pieces on the audits from last year and the information that was, that was set. And then, so it's an annual from the previous year. But if you do have any, any areas that you wanna pay special attention to this year, just shoot me a message and say that, that area, I'm interested in that.
So going forward, it would be helpful just to put that time period at the top so we know when to hold you accountable for? That sentence doesn't make any sense, but hopefully you can interpret it.
Yeah, I thought it said that in the heading, on, on the initial. That's okay. You can look for it.
Yeah, that's, that's just for limitation number one, right?
No, that's the whole document. The, it's the policy 2.8, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine. We can make that more explicit.
We can talk about it offline.
We can make it more explicit if you didn't pick that up.
So there was another thing around limitation number six. No, I'm sorry, limitation number seven. So this is just going forward. Limitation number seven, allow the board to be deprived of a workable mechanism for official board officer, community, committee communications. I think this is going to the point of meeting mechanics. What I would ask, my, my personal expectation, and the board can weigh in, is that for board meetings going forward, materials are presented in advance for the board to read in advance and not be presented with that data in the moment.
I would say, I'll take that out of the environment and put that to practice. And I would say that if it's something you feel really strongly about, that you, I would refer that to the Policy Governance Committee and make sure that it's explicit in here. So then I'll be sure to.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi. Commissioner Vanki?
Just a question with limitation two. It says compliant, not in compliance or out of compliance.
Paper.
Oh, okay. Yeah, you just need an in when you, yeah, sorry.
And then, I don't know, at the end of last school year, you kept sending us this week in BSD, like a little bit.
Yes. Well, that kinda ran out, the, the software. So we, I've asked a communication specialist to find another vendor that can pull that together for us and be able to do that. So, yeah, I enjoyed those two, so.
Great. Any other? Great. Do I have a motion then to approve Superintendent, that the Superintendent is in compliance with monitoring report 2.8, communication to the board? Thank you, Commissioner Awal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanki. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Then the motion carries. So we moved the consent agenda. We've already approved that, even though it's listed on item eight. Next on the agenda is committee reports. First up is the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Report. Commissioner Curry and Commissioner Vanki?
Sure. We had a brief meeting on August 28th with Rachel Dolly with the Community Justice Center presenting on restorative practices, trainings within the district. So we had a comprehensive overview of that. We heard from one community member who was a parent at Hunt and is no longer in the district on the bullying issue. And this was also discussed and addressed with Henry Sparks, who's, what's his official title?
Director Equity.
Oh.
Safety in our schools.
Safety and inclusivity.
Yes. And he's also the head of bullying, hazing, and harassment. And one issue that came up is that parents need to be informed, know your rights. I know one of the public comment speakers talked about that students don't know their rights, but it's also parents don't know our rights. So, so we'll be addressing some of these issues this school year.
Yeah, it was, it was helpful to have Sparks, like delineate very clearly that there's, there's rights, and then there's appropriate practice and application of the tools. And there's a legal path that is available, but it has to meet a certain standard. So there was, the nice thing about having restorative practices presentation was that that is the opportunity for teachers, staff, and administrators to really develop prevent, skills to prevent and address bullying. And that tier one training is what is being delivered in the middle schools now and has not really been delivered to date. And that's where I think we've seen most of the problem. So.
Hopefully, that will build. Thank you.
I was at that.
Hold on, sorry. Thank you. Commissioner Awal?
I was at that conference yesterday, and in a group, we were talking with them.
Kathy, could you speak up, please?
Oh, my God.
Yes.
I, I was at the Equity Conference, Equity and Education Conference yesterday. And we were talking about this, and they said that there, the monies to train the middle and high school teachers didn't come with it. Was it a grant, or what was it that didn't come? But at any rate, I guess this is something near and dear to my heart that we need to get going on. And I'm wondering why we couldn't find money in our budget somewhere else until that money came in to pay for those four days of training, because I can't watch another year of this go by that we haven't trained the middle and high school. Not principals, but.
Commissioner Awal, I think you're speaking about the restorative.
Yes.
Yes. So if it's a budget question, I mean, I think that's, that's for the board to determine if we want to put resources there.
But I thought the money came in.
One minute. Commissioner Awal.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure, because there's a number of different issues. But certainly, I know that restorative practices, we put in force some, some items for budget time. So I mean, that's the time to make sure that we have the kind of support for them to do what they need to do. But there was some complications, and it wasn't just about budget. There was some other issues this summer around implementing some of the training.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, Co-Chairs. Next will be the Committee Report, Report for Policy Governance. Commissioner Wick?
Oh, sure. I was excited that we had our first Policy and Governance Committee meeting, Thursday, September 6th at Champlain, 5:30 to 7:20. We had a good showing, and we're just, you know, getting started. We considered a number of the potential draft policies that were published online and are still online at the agenda. So if you didn't make it, please feel free to look through it and join us next time. We will be getting on a regular schedule soon, shooting for at least once a month, and we'll send out a notice soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Commissioner, any?
Commissioner Wick, can you explain the process for updating a policy? So, we, we talked about it at committee?
Yep.
Right? So is there a cadence? Is there a process that, that Commissioner should be aware of?
Yep. What we talked about is I'm going to confirm that process with Attorney McNeil and come back to the committee and have it all laid out in writing so that we can understand exactly what's needed. But historically, it's been the two-reading rule, once we bring it to, to the full board. So anything that makes it out of committee would be, generally speaking, a two-reading rule.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner Wick. Next is the Community Engagement Committee. Commissioners Gulick and Fisher, Co-Chairs.
Thank you, Chair. Well, so we had our kickoff meeting in, in late August. We had about over 10 attendees, including six board members. So thank you all for attending. I encourage you to read the minutes, and I apologize, we did not share the presentation, so I will do that separately. One of the things that I'm working on is a framework. This is basically a toolkit for the, for the board and for the district on how to engage the community some ideas. And another great idea that came out, and Tracy Dengler mentioned this in public comment, was an ad hoc committee for early education. So, Commissioner Gulick and I will work on a resolution for next time to bring to the board, something around, similar to the BHS re-envisioning, to engage the community early, or at this point, in strategy for early ed. And finally, I think the most important thing for me to communicate to the board and to district leadership is that The community engagement is, committee is not the funnel for all engagement. Um, and we all should be doing it. The, the committee helps guide the strategy and tactics. Uh, it is not the sole voice of the district engaging with the community. So, Commissioner Gulick, did I miss anything?
No, I think the minutes tell the story.
Yes, Commissioner Marala.
Um, yes, um, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection, recollection is that the envision, re-envisioned BHS committee was actually convened by the superintendent and it was convened of community members. And I don't believe the board took any action on that committee. Is that correct?
Right.
So, so I think something similar like that, if you were considering pre-K, might not require board action.
Great. We'll look into that. Thank you, Commissioner Marala for that. And well said, Commissioner Fisher. We're all engaged for sure. Thank you, Commissioner Marala. Any other discussion? Next on the agenda, we will move into executive session. So, a motion to a specific finding that premature general public knowledge of the topic of the intended executive session would clearly place the board or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. Number two, a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters contemplated by one VSA 313, one VSA 3, uh, excuse me, 313A, one A, B, C, D and F. So, do I have a second?
I'll make those motions. I so make those motions. Any seconds?
I will second that.
Thank you. Any opposed?
Any, all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry. Abstentions? We'll move into executive sessions.